Welcome to December 19th meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission. I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentations. Commission members ask questions if any. Members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and project and four against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beep will indicate one minute left to speak. And at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience. And please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I would announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application, and the results of voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issue arise in the deliberation that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, the supernumerary will vote in their stead unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absences. The planning commission makes fine decisions, subject to appeal on subdivisions, approvals, plan unit developments, PUDs. The planning commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications, with the city council making the final decision. Please turn off for silence our cell phones at this time. Commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphone when speaking. Roll call, myself, Ms. Libby Latham.
Here.
Jennifer Denson.
Here.
Ms. Shirley Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Taylor Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Matt Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Nick Omburger.
Here.
Ms. Beth Rich.
Here.
Mr. Cart Blackwell.
Here.
We have a quarrel.
Henry's here.
Oh. You're here too, Henry. Yours was blank. You're a ghost. Beginning with our item number one with holdovers, 3450 Gerbi Road, Addison Wood subdivision, re-subdivision, as well as a PUD, both recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Actor is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this application? Thank you. Item number two. 3703 Old Shell Road, China Berry subdivision, recommended for tentative approval. The applicant present?
Jerry Bird, Bird Surveying Company for the applicant. Basically, we are all right with everything except number two, condition two. Recommendation is twenty-foot building setback that would be measured from a point eight-and-a-half feet from the current right-of-way line. The eight-and-a-half feet would be for a future widening, if Whacker ever got widened. Really, no need to widen Whacker. In fact, the four houses that are same side of the street as we're on, south of us, was built utilizing the existing right-of-way line. And the pavement on Whacker is city standard, 26-foot, curb and gutter on both sides. So, like I say, it's not a substandard street that needs to be widened. Whacker Lane is neighborhood street, five blocks long. One block from Old Shell going south beside our property to Zimlich, and then four blocks north of Old Shell, it gets you dead ending into Spring Hill Avenue. It, basically, if there's no need to widen the street, why should we allow for widening with the eight-and-a-half feet? What we would ask you to do is waive that requirement, and let's just have a twenty-foot building setback from the current right-of-way line on the property.
I've got a question for staff. It was written that the Board of Zoning Adjustment would be the board that would be able to approve this request if deemed, you know, necessary. Is this not something we can take in consideration now?
Well, the planning commission can waive the right-of-way dedication requirement and can allow for a reduced setback on, based on subdivision regulations, but the zoning ordinance would still require a minimum side yard setback of twenty feet on this side. So even if the planning commission approved a ten-foot wide setback on this side, they would have to then go to the Board of Adjustment to change the zoning requirement. So, the planning commission can waive the right-of-way dedication requirement and can waive the setback in lieu of dedication as well and on the plat, and you can also allow the twenty-foot setback from the existing right-of-way line. If you want to allow anything less than that, then the applicant will then also have to go to the Board of Adjustment.
But clear this up for me, aren't they asking for a twenty-foot setback from the right-of-way? Isn't that what you're asking for?
From the existing right-of-way line, twenty-foot building setback.
And if that's all they're asking for, then they only have to come to the planning commission.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Bird, you're asking for that twenty-foot setback to be removed?
No, no, the eight-and-a-half foot portion. Just take the property just like it is, the existing right-of-way line, and utilize a twenty-foot building setback.
Okay.
That's on Whacker 25 from Old Shell.
Which would remove requesting the additional setbacks providing the 25 feet from center line of Whacker.
That's right, remove that portion.
What's, I don't quite follow the eight-and-a-half feet you keep referencing. What's that?
That's in order to provide the standard 25 feet from the center line to the right-of-way, to the property line. Whacker is a, has a substandard with right-of-way.
Gotcha. I follow you. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. It's the right-of-way is substandard, the pavement is city standard.
Any other questions by commissioners? Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. New subdivision applications. Item number three, 1166 and 1168 Elmira Street, P-O-E-I-M-A subdivision, recommended for tentative approvals. The applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Actor is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Item number four, 3945 and 3949 Government Bar and 1251 Azelia Road, Azelia Oaks Center Subdivision, recommended for tentative approvals. The applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Actor is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. New plan unit development applications. Item number five, 5805 U.S. Highway 990, Don Carlos Incorporated, recommended for tentative approvals. The applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Actor is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? New rezoning applications. Item number six, 2989 Dolphin Street, Thomas Larry Smith, recommended for tentative approvals. The applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendation? Actor is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against?
Frankie Little, and my address is 2888 Lou Rondo Drive North. You can see it on the map there. I bought that house a year ago. Had I known then that an Alta Point medical facility would be there in my backyard, I would not have bought the house. I'm disappointed to hear that that is what is being, you know, chosen to go in that location. And I just wanted to be here to speak out against it.
Okay. Any questions by commissioners? Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak against? Would the applicant like to make any comments?
I don't have a lot to add to what's already in the staff report. We're down zoning from a B2 to an LB2, which we'd be allowed by right on either of those zonings. So, just if y'all have any other questions for me, I'll be glad to talk to y'all about it. I'm sorry, Larry Smith. And I'm with SC Civil, address is 880 Holcomb Boulevard, Suite F. And that's in Fairhope.
Any questions by commissioners?
Just for the record, we do have, I guess, one letter in opposition and one letter in favor of the development.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question about the applicant? Is this all daytime use, no residential, or do you anticipate what the use would be of the facility?
Right now, it's my understanding it's daytime use. I'd have to check with the client about that, but that's my understanding.
Any other questions? New group applications, item number seven, 2955 Dolphin Street, Graftery subdivision, PUD and zoning, all recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Actor is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against?
Mr. Chairman, from City Engineering, this property does have a potential for some drainage issues, and we just wanted to let the applicant know that we will be looking at the drainage system and what they propose and maybe requiring some additional detention requirements.
Okay.
My name is Mary S. Zogby. I live at 2862 Hillburn Drive. We had been down here earlier this year about some concerns that we had about a certain proposal that was before the commission, about a car wash. We were very much against that. Now, since being involved in this thing and living in that area since 1962, I'm pretty much staying back with my neighbors who are intimately affected by anything that goes on with this graph property. I want to make it clear that I've had no objection from any of the neighbors, particularly the people living on Hillburn, Graff Court, and others that are living down, I guess, to the western side of the subdivision. I just wanted to make it clear that no one has come to me and said that they were against instance. I also want to make you aware of the fact, I do sit on the Board of Alta Point. So, they have made every effort to contact people and had me, had a meeting out at Alta Point to reveal what they were asking for as far as a facility in this area of Dolphin and Sage. Something's going to happen with this property one day or another time. So, the comments I've heard are, well, that's a lot better than a car wash, okay? But the important thing is that we want to see a quality development in that area, and we feel that, I personally feel that this makes a better appearance and a better use of that property than what has been proposed in the past. So, I'm not against Alta Point. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Yes, Ms. Rich?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
In the discussions with the neighborhood, did they talk about the hours of the operation of the facility, and would it be any kind of residential or is it strictly eight to five, like a whole office, but mostly be some weekends maybe?
I understand that it's Monday through Friday, 7:30 or eight to five in the afternoon.
So, that's what?
And it's, it will accomplish, yeah. It will accomplish also the fact that the children's services that are now at the foot of Old Shell Road, right there by the interstate, will be moved into that facility, and there will also be some other programs.
But not residential?
No, no residential at all.
Would that be an LB2 anyway, or wouldn't they allow?
Thank you. Thank you.
Question for staff, I mean, we're taking this whole property and basically down zoning it to limited business from B2?
Essentially, the preponderance of the property is already zoned LB2. The only two lots that are not are the two corner lots.
Right.
And with these applications, number six and number seven, those two lots would then be rezoned to LB2.
Which in the future would prevent car washes and such.
LB2 does not allow a car wash.
Okay.
And I think I was only in minority on this, but when we rejected the B2 for the car wash, showing what the use would be on the property, there were concerns from the neighbors that it was supposed to be a bank and then I think a retail type parcel. I thought that this would automatically go back to be an R1 to an LB2, because the zoning did not take just basically how scenario where people were under one impression and to get rezoned with them, indeed, that was not the bank, although a bank could go in the B2, car wash could go in the B2, but it wasn't what was proposed. And the Supreme Court, or State Supreme Court, basically said, when something like that happens, and then the development does not stay focused on exactly what the applicant had said would be the use for the particular zoning classification, it would revert back to the, to the older zoning. So, it's, it's splitting hairs, but I really see this going from the R1 to LB2. Not, it doesn't hold a B2 right now. We're not downs, and we are upzoning a bit, but it's better as the neighbor, you know, who is going to feel the effects, so that this is a better use than car wash.
So, are we upzoning, downzoning, or doesn't matter?
I'm sorry.
Are we, are we upzoning or downzoning, or does it even matter? It doesn't seem material.
It's material to the Supreme Court of what the zoning application became after people were under the impression and left back numerous years ago, which is why those neighbors came out to object to car wash. And the ruling was you go back to the original zoning because of the misadvertising, the misimpression that people walked with in order to get its classification. It was to have specific use at the time.
The, when those applications came through the commission in May of 2018, the commission was provided with a legal opinion that stated these two properties were zoned B2 for a bank or a pharmacy. What you have before you now is a rezoning, so this entire property goes to LB2.
The premise was initially the result that went from the R1 to those specific uses did not assign the entire B2 use, so that's why car wash was rejected.
That was the basis for the PUD.
And the idea is it doesn't stay in what was advertised in the, to the community at the time, it's to go back to the original zoning.
Mr. Gant, may I?
Yes, sir.
In 2008, the property was rezoned from R1 to B2 to allow a bank and a drugstore. What was before you in 2018 was a PUD application. That PUD application was denied, appealed to the city council, and the denial was upheld because the rezoning only allowed for use by a bank or a drugstore.
So, that application was turned, that application turned down based on the PUD, not necessarily on the zoning?
Exactly. The PUD application did not seek any type of rezoning. So, the PUD application is denied, the property remains B2 solely for use by a drugstore or a bank.
But if it, if it isn't a drugstore or a bank, it's supposed to go back to the R1?
It could be, somebody could put a drugstore on it tomorrow if they wanted to.
Yes, that was advertised.
That's, that's the point.
That's the only thing that it could be.
Right, but that's the point of this rezoning to go to LB2.
But this isn't a drugstore, and the lot is going from an R1, it's sort of starting from.
What we're, what we're voting on today is just, is for B2. Regardless of where we're starting from, what we're trying to approve today is an LB2.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
It goes in conjunction to the city voice, what's the unadvised sign, what you advertise is what you're supposed to do, and if not, you return the zoning.
This is the first rezoning application since 2008.
I'm Rose McPhillips, and I live next door to the LB2 property on Dolphin Street, immediate adjacent to it. I'm not so sure it doesn't go to an R1, and if it goes to an R1, I think you've got a notice issue, which I think is really of concern, because you haven't noticed to the neighbors or whatever that it's an R1 to a B2. You basically advertise it's a, I mean, an LB2. You basically advertise it's a B2 down to an LB2. It's a whole different realm of things. Now, with that being said, let me just say this. I am not opposed to an LB2 at this point in time for the specific purpose of Alta Point. I don't, I don't see a problem with it. Unlike Mary, I have heard stuff from some of the neighbors that are opposed to it. None of them are here that I, that I'm from, but there are some people that are concerned that there'll be drug addicts there and whatever. It's my understanding that this is not, not a drug addiction clinic, it's a mental health clinic. And I used to work next door to Mobile Mental Health years ago, never had a problem. I have been in contact with Easter Seal and also with VRS to see whether or not they've had any problems with the current mental health to address what a certain person in our neighborhood was so concerned about. And, you know, and none of them have indicated that there's been any problems over there. Apparently, Alta Point has very good security. And my thing is, is that if they're not on medication, they're not coming anyway. If they are on medication, they're generally not going to give you a problem, because I've dealt with a bunch, a bunch of people that have mental illness and whatever. So, I don't, and I'm the one that's going to be most closely affected, because I'm the closest one to it. And I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I do have a problem with the issue of whether or not it's an R1 to a B, LB2, or B2 to an LB2, but that's more of a procedural issue which y'all have got to decide. Any questions? No?
Would the applicant like, is there anyone else here to speak for or against?
I have one question. Looking at the drawing, this question is for traffic, it, that roundabout looks mighty close to Dolphin Street. Are y'all concerned about that at all?
It was.
I can't tell how close it really is, but.
It looked, it looked to us to be about 100 feet from the right-of-way of Dolphin Street, and it is a little close. I understand, looking at the drawings that we had, that there is an oak tree that they're trying to save, that's in the middle of that roundabout. So, unless they wanted to reconsider the livelihood of the oak tree, I think that's their intention, is to keep it on the property line, but unfortunately, that's where the tree is as well. Yeah, there is concern about it being that close, but the backup would primarily be within their own property, so in essence, they would be doing it to themselves.
Okay.
So, that's why we didn't necessarily object to it.
And you don't think it'll back up at all on Dolphin Street? That's just such a busy street.
It should not. I understand, and it should not, because you would envision that if there was at one point some kind of high turnover of volume, that it's either all going out or it's all coming in, something to that effect, not necessarily happening at the same time.
Thank you so much.
I have a question also for traffic.
Yes, ma'am.
What about the turn lane on Dolphin headed towards Sage to turn left onto Sage? How will that be impacted by this?
So, the turn lane at Dolphin, or on Dolphin at Sage will be unimpacted. It will remain as is. The proposal would be to construct a westbound turn lane on Dolphin at the median cut that's just east of that turn lane, that right now only goes to the park. So, the, the length of the turn lane that's there now to turn onto Sage would remain unchanged, and unless the city wanted to cut off its own access to the park, which I don't think they want to, it will not change at this point, or in the future.
And then I had a question about the turn lane on Sage. It goes both ways, I guess?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, how is that, having that entrance and exit on Sage from the property, going to impact the turn lane?
So, the driveway, and it's hard, it's difficult to tell from the site map, but if you can flip to the aerial view, the driveway that's proposed for the site right now is aligned with Graff Boulevard, so it is not in the area of the commercial driveways at all, and it's actually aligned with Graff Boulevard to the best of their ability and how it's, with the Boulevard being a divided roadway, too, they've aligned it with the better side of the Boulevard, so that there shouldn't be conflicting left turns, even within the turn lane itself. I'm sure there are times, especially if there's issues on the interstate, where Sage can get backed up and that turn lane can end, but it's, it's no similar to other issues where people just get in that turn lane too soon, and if for some reason that becomes a problem, but the driveway is going to be 800 feet from Dolphin Street, so we don't envision it being an everyday problem.
Larry Smith, got me my information from the last one. I just wanted to, if we go back to the site plan, I did want to point out that was the purpose of that roundout. There is a very nice live oak right there, and so, that's actually the purpose of a lot of what's going, going on this side is trying to protect the trees. We know that that's always been a concern for this property, and so that's. We know that that's always been a concern for this property, and so that's why the, the road bows out instead of just straight, um, south. Um, there's a cluster of trees that, um, we have the surveyor pick up, pick up drip line radiuses. We met the city arborist out there to look at the different trees to figure out which ones were important viable trees that we needed to protect. Um, and so this layout took all that into consideration, and we had several, um, iterations and different shifting of the property lines to make sure that we, we could, um, save the, um, significant trees, um, best by our ability. And so, yes, that is the purpose of the roundabout. Um, and then I think George had a comment earlier about the drainage. We'll gladly, um, work with George when we, if this gets to move forward and to the design phase, um, to work on the stormwater drainage for the site.
Any questions by commissioners? Thank you.
Can I add a point?
Uh, I can't. I already spoke, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry. You can, you spoke on the previous application.
When I spoke earlier, um, I mentioned, I was actually talking about this site plan. My name's Frankie Little. Um, like I said earlier, I'd bought a house a year ago right on that corner there, um, very close to that back parking lot. And, um, several of the concerns, um, one, the drainage that you mentioned, that neighborhood floods, um, there's a drainage ditch directly behind my property, um, and I can only imagine right now all that being woods, that soil soaking up rain, I can only, only imagine with a parking lot, what that rain has to go somewhere, and if it's not being soaked into the soil, where is it going to go? Is it going to overflow the drainage ditch behind my house? Um, is it going to flood the neighborhood even more than it's already, uh, being flooded when it does rain heavy? Um, when we had the heavy rain a few months ago, people were canoeing down the street. Um, and one other thing I'd like to mention, that, that parking lot, um, y'all said that the facility be closed at five o'clock. Um, I'm not sure what the security like at night, but I have two young children, there's lots of young children in our neighborhood. There's a basketball court and a park directly, directly across, a lot of kids hang out. It seems like to me that back parking lot would be an ideal place for somebody to go at night and do anything. I don't know that they would be visible from Sage or Dolphin, that if I was maybe a criminal or doing drugs, I would think that could be an ideal place to do it, you know, away from where people can see, but that is very close to my house, so that is a concern to me. You have any questions?
Any questions by commissioners? I'm sure that there's going to be a fencing requirement around the perimeter of the property, six foot tall wooden privacy fence, or what is suggested?
We included the same conditions regarding buffering that were on the prior approval.
I had heard six foot tall, yes. Um, I would request higher. Um, we have a two-story house, I would, I don't know, six feet, we'll bet it.
Is that with B2 in the grid?
Correct.
And would it be when they develop?
That is correct.
So it wouldn't be affecting this one right now?
Correct, because the proposed development is not adjoining residential.
But they're bringing in, I suppose, so technically you could impose, right, it's R1.
How many feet is the, is the potential on? I can't tell.
Two hundred? Two forty-five, forty-two? The back line of two A? Have that right?
Over 200 feet.
Over 200 feet.
Yes. Here's your dimension here.
I understand.
When Mr. Little's done, I would like to hear the applicant respond to the security of the parking lot.
I'm done. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak against? With the applicant, please come back.
Got me. Um, yes, uh, jump back real quick. Um, yeah, the, our, our side of the development's all Lot 1A, um, other than the development of the road, don't plan on clearing any of Lot 2A, other than we need to build the roads coming in. Um, and so that, any development on that would require revision to the PUD, um, so it'll be back before y'all, um, when, um, anything is proposed on Lot 2A. My client is only purchasing Lot 1A. Um, as far as security, I mean, we'll definitely have sight lighting to make it visible, um, what's going on in the parking lot. Um, you know, I don't know that they have security guards that work after hours. Um, it's just any other, like any other business in that area that has a parking lot, um, but the parking lot will be lit, um, to the normal standards. And, you know, as I said, as far as buffering goes, we have tried our hardest to maintain and keep some of the, um, existing trees. You can see the one large odd-looking island in that site, and that's another large live oak that we're trying to protect. That's kind of in that same parking lot in that same line of sight, um, and we'll obviously also have to include new landscaping, um, but I don't know if that answers your question.
Do you consider, or do you kind of secure debates on your entry points for after hours?
I'll, if you give me a few minutes, I'll ask the client, if that's something that they can-
There was also the concern about drainage mentioned, and, um, I guess there's going to be retention or detention ponds on the property at some point?
Yes, sir. We'll have to provide detention, and we'll work with, um, the engineering department because, like George expressed, concerns of some drainage issues in that area, so, um, we will be providing detention and we'll discuss with him any additional methods or means that they need.
Um, the drainage, this is a stat. Do you anticipate that the drainage would, would stay on the site that's being approved? Or the drainage need to be on one of those other lots? Would they have to clear some of that in order to do their drainage for the parking?
The, um, actually Lot 1, a lot of that will be draining, um, towards Sage Avenue. Um, and so they should be able to provide the detention on that lot. I, I mean, I don't anticipate they'd have to go on to 2A or 3A to do that.
Any other questions by commissioners? Thank you. Move to item number eight, 758 Downtown Boulevard and 4312 Midmost Drive, subdivision and zoning, both recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Is there anyone here to speak against? Thank you.
Item number nine, Midtown Mobile Subdivision, 81012 and 1810, 1812 and 1814 O'Shea Road, and 117 Mobile Infirmary Boulevard, subdivision PUD, planning approval recommended for approval.
William Latta, Clark Gere Latham and Associates, 3901 Spring Hill Avenue. The applicant is generally in agreement with the approvals recommended by staff. However, we would like y'all to look at condition number five on the PUD. It is the condition that is asking for us to obtain variances for the front setback, the reduced front landscape, you have reduced frontage trees and parking with access maneuvering in the right of way. We think those items can be handled under the PUD approval and would like to ask y'all to do so. The other thing that we would like to ask is we would request that y'all vote on these applications separately. The subdivision will create the three lots, uh, that are required. The PUD is only for lots one and two, not lot three. And so, and so we would remove any reference to lot three on the PUD approval, and the planning approval only pertains to lot three, and we would remove any references to lots one and two on the planning approval.
Any questions by commissioners? Let me show Ms. Latham is recused. We'll get staff's comments on those requests.
The, the commission, and of course ultimately the letters of decision can be altered to consider the planning approval separately and then having the PUD for only propose lots one and two. Uh, the issues with the conditions, um, those can be addressed primarily by the planning commission. What occurred is in the narrative of the application, which is then what is utilized to send out the notices, didn't include the request for the encroachment and the maneuvering into the right of way and so forth. So when notices were sent out, those elements weren't included. The applicant can ask and has for those to be considered as part of the PUD. The public hearings today, anyone concerned can address that now. So those can be approved by the commission with the exception that utilizing the right of way for maneuvering will still need to have a right of way use agreement, which commission and the board have no authority over.
But it would not require, require variance.
Correct.
Just the right of way use agreement.
Correct.
And those items are basically as the property sits today. They're talking about the maneuvering in the right of way and the parking is, is kind of being used by-
That's correct. There, there are some existing parking spaces that are, we are keeping them in their same position, same use.
Yeah.
It's a new building.
Got it.
Correct.
Question for staff, so is some of the existing parking actually in the right of way? I guess as I'm looking at the site plan, it doesn't, it doesn't look like it. So if it's not, I don't think it would require them to pursue a use agreement.
It, it depends on whether you're driving a Suburban or a Fiat. Um, you know, it, it illustrates that it's right on the edge.
I, I think we would ask the applicant to adjust his depth of his parking spots to accommodate the Suburbans where he can.
They will still have to meet, you know, standard dimensional, but we can of course get with engineering and right of way before we have the applicant proceed with the use agreement application, just to ensure that everything is or is not completely located on private property.
Yeah, he should, he should just make sure the applicant's aware of the, the requirements of a use agreement. It requires naming the cities and additional shirt, extra insurance, recording and probate, so it's, you want to try to avoid that, if at all possible, unless that's your-
So, so question for you on that. Is the access and maneuvering part of that, would we have to move all of that onto private property to avoid that, or just the parking spaces themselves?
The PUD can take that into account. The zoning ordinance without either the PUD approval or a variance does not allow at maneuvering in the right of way.
Okay. Well typically the use agreement is just looking for when you are physically using it for, for parking, not the, not the maneuver, so it's a little bit of a overlap of, overlap, but a little difference in requirements.
So if I'm understanding correctly, we could handle the maneuvering and access issues with the PUD approval, and whether or not the parking spaces is entirely located on private property or not would determine the right of way use agreement.
I think that's correct.
I agree.
And if it doesn't meet the requirements, then he would have to get a variance.
Can you re, can you give a little, little detail to your question? I want to make sure I answer it.
We've addressed all the concerns, but he's asking about item number five. We've addressed all those concerns except for the maneuvering, and if he can't-
The PUD can address that. It can allow, this PUD approval, as amended here at the podium, may allow the maneuvering area in the right of way. Yes, sir.
So we can address all of his concerns?
Yes, sir.
With this PUD, okay. Any other questions by commissioners?
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak for this?
My name is Jim Fibby. I live at 124 Silverwood Street, Mobile. Uh, I have no problems with the development of the property. I think it will be good for Midtown. I've, I've been a resident of Midtown since 1966 at this address. My wife has lived at this address since 1945, so we are firm believers in Midtown. I, I have some concerns, uh, that I, I wrote, uh, a few comments to the office as directed in the notice of this meeting, and I don't know whether those get conveyed to the commissioners or not, but I'm, I'm not going to waste your time and read those to you again. I think they're pretty self-explanatory. Uh, I'm available if you have any questions about any of those comments. Uh, it's been a, an ongoing drainage problem for the, for the Little Stickney Basin, and, and I don't want this development to create another dam to back water up further than we already get it. Many of those streets, as I've mentioned, are impassable when we have rainstorms, and they don't have to be real big rainstorms either. Uh, the water cannot get into the drainage system. The improvements that were put in on Little Stickney stopped at the east side of Mobile Infirmary Boulevard. At that time, I asked if there was no way, why, why can't we just go ahead and take it to the west side and at least prevent another entry for the water to get into? I know, as the engineers know, uh, the drainage system up through Little Stickney, through the drainage basin, uh, is inadequate to handle it, and there are easement problems. Uh, I've worked with the, some people from the city on occasions and gotten some of the residents, uh, that were, uh, in the way, so to speak, for the, for drainage easement to say, yes, we'll come in, take my driveway out and put a culvert through there, that's fine. They're, they're all concerned about this, uh, the flooding that takes place, and many of those streets are impassable when we have rains. And all I'm asking is that there be provisions such that not only that the increase in drainage and runoff from the development that takes place on this property, uh, is, is addressed, but also the easement to the property and the extension of that, uh, box culvert that was put in several years back, uh, to, to where it can take some of the water, uh, that back up even on the surface, uh, it just, it could be done. I, I know it can. But anyway, that's what I'm here for. I, I'm all for the development of, of Midtown, although I know it's going to cause a lot more congestion around the Dew Drop Inn in, in that corner, but we can handle that, we can live with that, but we don't, the drainage issue, it was, uh, you know, it's been going on since the days when Peavy was your public works director. Uh, and, and that's many years ago, and I, I had the privilege of having a lot of interchange with Tom on professional matters. But anyway, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them to them. I've given Nick Amberger my, my cell phone number, my home number, and certainly be, be available just about any time, Nick.
Mr. Chairman, if I may address those concerns?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Fibby's exactly correct. Uh, his, his letter was very thorough in what he provided to us. Uh, the culvert has been modernized up to the, up to the side to carry a very significant amount of drainage in any, in any rainfall event. Uh, you know, anything upstream of there would be required to go to a more stringent design standard. Uh, we would like, we'd like our- We would like, we'd like our this site to develop a 100-year, 200-year design and if they design a retention to accommodate a 100-year storm event and only release at a two-year rate. So I think that concern will be addressed. As for extending the culvert in the future, it's very much a project that's desired. It's on our capital desires need. I would encourage you and your neighbors to reach out to your city council member for that, as that is a project that's-
I do that at every community meeting that he has.
I think he says, when you ring, he will spring. So I would recommend you ringing him sometime. It's a big project. I mean, it is, it is a multi-million dollar effort to take it, take it, take it the next step farther. And you are correct, there's real estate challenges and there are construction challenges with it as well. But this site, you know, what will be required of anything that gets developed on any of these lots will be the more stringent standard. And so, you know, their engineer will have to work with, work with my office, George, of course, and make sure that it doesn't do any more harm.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Anyone else speak for this?
Sorry, hi. We are next door-
Your name and address, please.
We're Robin Hamlin, 1808 Oshel Road. We are concerned about this development and the potential traffic that it will create of such a hazardous in that area. We're also wondering, where exactly is the traffic going to come? From what our understanding is, is the parking is going to behind the development. Are you correct?
You'll have parking behind, but then like you have to the east along Dew Drop, they're proposing these spaces along the front.
Yeah, we understand the parking in the front because it is a hazard even with ours that, like you was talking about, Suburbans and other things coming through. We also have parking issues now with the development across the street, who we love, Nixons, but they are parking all over our parking as well, plus creating parking damage. And we're concerned that the traffic that this development will come to, will also create more traffic on our properties because we also own the buildings across the street, which is still taken up by Nixons right now. And we're afraid that they will walk across the street to go into the shops and use our parking as well, which right now we're having a big hole in our parking over there because of all the traffic. The other thing is, is there's a big oak close to the property line of the neighborhood to the left of the property when you're looking at it. Are they going to take that down?
On the site itself and the applicant's engineer could address this better, I do not see any preserved trees along the west property line.
So that big oak tree is not a preserved tree?
It doesn't appear to be. Now, is it on their property or the adjoining property to the west?
It is their property. It was part of her instruction, which is that property.
It is not proposed in this site plan to be saved.
So will they also have an entrance that goes out to Mobile Infirmary Drive as well? Or just out through that entrance there onto Oshel Road? And is there going to be a traffic light there?
No traffic light proposed. The only access to the Infirmary Boulevard is via the lot that has the cell tower on it.
Right. So that parking behind will all just come out to Oshel Road?
How many parking spots are there along this development?
Ninety-three.
And we know that the Dew Drop is old. We, that's the ominous of the Dew Drop, okay? We've tried to redo several times and we get voted down by our customers. But our concern too is down the street, Oshel Road, there was a development that has come about with the Oshel Road School. Those condos in the school itself are beautiful. I've been in them. Our concern, as in our neighbors' concerns, were when they built the other things next door to it that did not really meet the design that we were told it was going to do. And we're worried about the condominiums or apartments or whatever you are calling them up above. Are they going to look like the picture that we've been given?
This area, as far as historic criteria and review or compliance, is outside of a locally regulated historic district.
I'm asking, is the picture what they're going to look like?
We don't have one as part of this application.
Well, the picture they sent out to everyone that was concerned, I've got it if you'd like to see it.
We don't factor that into-
To address your concern about the, there is, it's mentioned here, the 50-inch live oak tree is mentioned in this application, but that was protected in a previous application. But am I reading that correctly where it's not part of this application on page five? Number nine. Page five.
You're correct. You're correct. It's not part of the applications at hand. But I think what she's referring to is along Old Shell Road. This one is referring to one up here on the more northern portion of the, outside the property.
Is that tree in the right of way?
Yes, it is.
So it can be cut down?
It would have to go through the tree commission if it is in the right of way.
The one right there in that corner, right there.
So it's a city tree? It's not on private property?
Hold on just a second.
Which tree were you referring to?
The one that's right there in that corner on Oshel Road. Yes, right in that area.
That's the southwest corner.
The planned unit development site plan shows that there is a 42-inch live oak, or sorry, 42-inch oak tree on the private property between the proposed driveway and the proposed, or existing residential property to the west. That tree would need to be removed for the sidewalk that is proposed to be built as part of this development.
So the sidewalk will end right there where the oak tree is?
It will go through the oak tree.
That's what I'm saying. But it'll end right past the oak tree. Or where the oak tree should be.
I guess where I'm getting a little bit sideways is the compliance with Urban Forestry comments. I mean, we're, in this section here, we're referencing the 2011 application, which was let to expire. So does Urban Forestry Department, they have comments about this particular application that should be in here?
They had standard comments. They did not have anything specific or unique to this application. As illustrated on their site plan, the tree here is located on private property. And based on the plan, it more than likely would have to come out between the driveway and the sidewalk.
It looks like there, it looks like there might be a, I look at their site plan, assuming it's accurate. There's a tree down in that very corner, but then there's also one up there that's on the private property. And it looks like there's, you know, one on the, down in the corner, it's-
That's the 42-inch oak?
Yeah. It looks like they're leaving it. I mean, maybe the applicant can address that. But the tree that's in the parking lot, clearly that's on private property, it would have to come down according to that layout. I mean, that's-
Well, the site plan shows that there is one 42 oak near the front of the property that the sidewalk is proposed to go through. Then about 15 feet north of that, there's another 2-inch oak and a 36-inch oak. And then about 50 feet north of that, there's a 46-inch oak. Some of these trees could remain, but the one-
Exactly. I mean, I think it's something that would have to be coordinated because you could allow them to remain, but when you go in and put the infrastructure in, in five years, you're going to have a declined oak tree.
Anyway, the other concern we have too is just, just so we know, is building so close and the fact of our structure and the, under support of our structure. So we have great concerns about it.
Say this again?
Building, a building like that, that close to our building and the old, how old our building is, and we have a three-foot drop underneath our building, under, walk under. And we're just really concerned about the, during development of that facility, the structural damage will, that will impact us.
That'd be a civil matter?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. I work for one. I was just telling our concerns. It was something we're concerned about. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak for or against this application? The applicant has time to respond if they so choose.
William Latta, Clark Hill Latham, 3901 Spring Hill Avenue. We just want to address a few of the comments. They are correct about the drainage issues, and we're very aware of the drainage issues in this area. There are some drainage infrastructures, ditches that run through lot two that we will obviously be looking at the as-belts of what's there, what we can put there, how we can access it, how we can detain. We'll obviously work with engineering to make sure we follow the ordinance as we're required to. As far as the live oak issue on the corner, really the main one that's threatened is that one on the very corner, and it is because of the sidewalk issue. Because of that parking out front, the existing parking, the sidewalk runs just at the head of that parking. And to keep it going linearly across our front property line, we have to bring it out to the right of way at some point. And so our options are either there through that tree or on the other side, which is where the fire department wants us to put our FDC. And so, and, you know, observing fire safety, we chose to move our sidewalk there. As far as the construction matter, obviously we will talk with our contractors and take any precautions necessary to protect, protect around the area.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from commissioners? Yes, Ms. Rich?
Thank you. If you're calling this a multi-use development, can you give us some insight into what that multi-use will consist of? Is it residential?
So on the bottom floor, it would be retail and restaurant. On the top two floors, it would be residential.
And what's the total square footage of the?
Of these, the whole building or the footprint?
Well, no, the building. I'm interested in the-
So we got 8250 times three, approximately 20-
It's three stories? And you have a patio that fronts Old Shell Road?
Correct.
Would that service your restaurant, I take it?
Correct.
How many residential units? Will be included?
I believe it's 20. 24 units.
One bedroom, two bedroom? Do you know?
Makes up one, too.
And how many parking spaces if you also-
93.
93 total, and that's the ones that back into Old Shell? Including those?
Correct.
Any other questions by commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No, no ma'am, we, we close. That closes our public hearing session. We'll now enter into deliberation.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say a couple of things before we start that.
Yes.
I would like to remind, when you make a motion on a planning approval or a PUD, please have in your motion the adoption of the findings of fact and on a rezoning list one or all of the conditions that are required under our zoning ordinance. It seems lately that anytime one of our applications ends up before city council, the city council attorneys, we have not followed our own procedures and regulations. So to try and nip that in the bud, let's make sure we do that. And also on seven and eight, I'm going to recuse myself, as you saw during the presentation. Mr. Rossler will handle any questions y'all have on that. Thank you.
Beginning with our holdovers. Item number one, 3450 Gerbi Road subdivision application and a PUD, both recommended for tentative approval. It's their motion.
Can we take them separate, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For the PUD, moved to approve based on staff recommendation with findings of facts A, B, C, and D.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes. I have some questions about this.
This has been on and off this planning commission's agenda as a planned unit development. The rezoning went through because it was actually a downzoning initially. But on this, is the staff seeing this as a public road? The PUD doesn't require that. It doesn't make it, as a matter of fact, it's like, when I read your staff report, it's even, it's saying that it's not private. Because at one time it was to be gated and it was private and they were for seer citizens. Now that's off the table. And it doesn't involve any commercial on Gerbi, which is probably a good thing with coming and going off that street. Ms. Rich? The second to the last paragraph in the bottom of page six mentions the proposed private street.
Right, but the new revised, I thought that was no longer considered private, that they would have an option to do city standards.
Well, I believe the street is actually built now, and it isn't built to city standards. So they would have a substantial cost burden to bring it into compliance before the city might be willing to accept it.
So when we do the PUD or subdivision, I mean, I don't even know where this fits in, but, so do we state that it is to be a private and perhaps gated drive?
Well, the description on your agenda for the PUD notes that it's a private subdivision, but that would also then go to it being a private street as well.
So I didn't know the street was built.
Yes.
Okay. And actually, we're discussing the subdivision right now, correct? Is that exact?
We are discussing.
I didn't know what he brought up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, all right, then I'll concentrate on this. The lot sides are smaller than normal, correct? And the coverage is greater than normal. What about cars that will be parking on a substandard street? And, because what is their driveway length?
Thank you. It's hard to tell, but you see a little inset that is more than likely parking court. This whole street is proposed as private. And so the city's not going to have any input into them backing out into the right of way or backing out in the street. I'm sorry, each structure has a garage?
It's just so standard of development. It's like packing it on in order to get, I'm sure there's an economic, you know, tool involved on the number of parcels. But it's like you're creating a very, kind of a, in a new facility, a lot of things that are not conducive to having good- a, in a new facility, a lot of things that are not conducive to having good economic development in the future.
So, you're concerned about parking? Is that the concern?
Yes, big time.
So, you've got a garage with each structure? That's what's, that's what's shown, and then you've also got, I guess, parallel parking along the street because of a?
There is a garage? I don't see any reference to a garage.
Yeah, the, the drawing shows a little sub-rectangle as part of the each house structure, and on the PUD site plan, that is the garage, and it looks like it's at least a single car, if not a double car, two-car garage.
And there's also parallel parking along the roadside that's set back off of the road, if I'm looking at this correctly.
Where would that, where would that be?
Well, the drawing we have doesn't show any on-street parking spaces. It has a sidewalk, and then the driveway area leading into the garage. So, essentially, it looks like they're going to have about ten feet between the front of the house and the edge of the sidewalk, and then another five feet to the edge of the street.
Which will give room for some parallel parking.
Possibly.
Or the park behind the, in front of the garage.
Right, right.
So, so there's a garage?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, it's in there designed?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah, I've seen developments like this before in different areas, and it's, I mean, it does make for limited parking, but there is adequate parking. If the, the street, if they have two cars to a house, they can get off the road and still have access for, for fire department to get in as needed.
And where's the innovative green space or extra thing that makes this a PUD, since that was one of the things that?
This is all?
All the wetlands that nobody could build in anyway, just considered there.
Absolutely. It's, it's all an area of green spaces.
Uh-huh. Okay. No ingress or ingress of the hill crest, right?
Correct.
Even though the report talked about having adequate right-of-way along hill crest, that's just the?
That's part of the subdivision to make sure that the major street plan is being followed, and since it's already gone through the subdivision process, any right-of-way dedication has already occurred.
Have they put any landscaping on their property now that it's all dirt-screwing, and I guess it has a street, but, no, because they were not, they didn't show any green on their, each one of those lots, correct?
It would be up to what each owner puts on their own property.
Dirt. That's all I'm saying. I mean, I, it's just, I would like to see something that was more attractive and better suited for the area and less, but this is a standard that we're willing to waive to get all those in there, and waiving things is probably not in the best interest of the overall area in general, because there, there is, like I said, it started out as a senior complex, and that's a gated community. Did they talk about gating it at all as a private drive? No. Not part of the PUD. But a garage is definitely part of the PUD.
Yes, ma'am.
That's helpful. And, and the trash, I mean, the garbage thing?
There's dumpsters shown.
Yeah. What was the staff, something about it could be removed if they, if they get private trash pickup from house to house?
Correct. Instead of one common dumpster that everyone has to lug their trash to.
Right, that would not be good. And, but all the mail would go, is that like a federal mail thing that have to be because there's so many?
That was, again, the staff wanted to allow them the flexibility rather than having one key. He asked for the entire development for them to have mail services.
Does the post office say what needs to be when something is on a private?
I cannot, I cannot address that. We simply didn't want to limit them to that one, one option, if the commission was willing to give them the flexibility.
And one and two, even though it's sitting in B1, are still residential? Are those commercial?
They're all B1.
Right.
But, yes, ma'am, those are still home, proposed to be homes.
Would R3 be the zoning for this? Is it just to be zoned appropriately for residential as opposed to a B1, where could each people, could everyone come in and get a business license under the B1, and would the city be forced to give them their B1 business license?
If they were to develop, if they wanted to use their home for anything other than what's allowed under a home occupation, they would have to bring their home up to commercial standards, including required.
And this doesn't need it?
Including required parking, and it would not.
And putting the, the RE as the zoning, doesn't, would this be an R3?
This uses, is a compliant use in, in B1 and R3.
And, and one and two would also not go commercial? Lots, lots wouldn't. The ones that face Gerbi?
Lots, all of it is zoned B1, but to utilize any of these proposed structures shown here, including lots one and two, to utilize any of those commercially, they would have to be developed to commercial standards, ADA access, parking, ingress, egress, et cetera. There's not the maneuvering area in those proposed lots to do.
But they pay taxes as a B1 and not a residential site? I think it's, it's interesting. Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes. Second part.
Moved to approve the subdivision based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposees. Item number two, thirty-seven oh three, Old Shell Road, China Berry subdivision, recommended for tentative approval. It's their motion.
I'll move for approval, changing number two to allow for the twenty-foot setback from the current right-of-way line.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Staff, is that give us what, what you're, what we're trying to accomplish properly?
Yes, by waiving the right-of-way dedication, additional setback, that takes care of it.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes. New subdivision applications. Item number three, eleven sixty-six and eleven sixty-eight, El Myra Street, recommended for tentative approval. It's their motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item number four, thirty-nine forty-five and thirty-nine forty-nine, Government Boulevard, Art Number Fifty-One, Azelia, Azelia Oak City subdivision, recommended for tentative approval. It's their motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes. New plan unit development applications. Item number five, fifty-eight oh five, US Highway Ninety West, Carlos Incorporated. The PUD is recommended for tentative approval. It's their motion.
Moved to approve based on staff recommendations, findings of facts A, B, and C.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes. New rezoning application, twenty-nine eighty-nine, Dalton Street, Larry Thomas Spiff, recommended for approval. It's their motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. I, I really would like to get some better handle on the fact that this is moving from a B2 to an LB2. Like I said, the Supreme Court ruling was clear with the Roadhouse Grill. When they ruled, they said that because it was originally advertised as retail, but then what came in for their building permits was the restaurant, and so, it was totally different than what the people walked, walked at the time for the granting of the, the B2. And the Supreme Court said, you have to start over. And so, I, I think we're starting out incorrectly by not doing it right on this particular application. I don't know, I don't know if we're going to have instances again, because it's been a long time from the Roadhouse Grill to this thing, but if things were site-specific and got a zoning classification based on an exact use, that's how the Supreme Court ruled, and I do believe that this goes back to the R1 and gets the LB2, which seems to be okay with the residents. I'm not trying to stop, but when you advertise something, you have to advertise it as, the rules say you do, and that was the ruling in that court back in ninety, whenever it was, it was in the nineties. But, they were very clear, start over. We couldn't start over because the building was already built, it was the way you would take everything, building permits had been granted, and nobody held up anything on, on the Roadhouse Grill, or the Roadhouse Grill is there and it exists. But the point is, is that that raw land should have gone back to R1, and that's what the court ruled. You cannot let people leave a public meeting thinking something is going to take place and then change it because you have the zoning classification. It was only for that use, and they said, start over. So, this should be an R1 going to the LB2. It doesn't mean it can't happen, it just is the right way to advertise it.
I remember when this came up when the car wash was here, and I believe, and Mr. Rossler may have to step up and answer questions, I believe we decided a rezoning was not before us at this time, it was a PUD, so it was not appropriate for us to request the downzoning to R1 at that time. We were denying the car wash because that was not, was advertised, and at that time, the application did not say and state that anything allowed in B2 would be allowed, it simply said a bank would be allowed, or a drugstore. So, we denied the car wash based on that, but did not, and I don't even know if there's a mechanism for us to choose when it's a PUD for us to downzone to an R1. So, here we sit today, the property was not built on and was denied for a car wash, and now we are not asking to build something by right in a B2, we're asking to rezone it to the requested zone. So, I think your, your point, I understand if we were trying to build within the B2, but because it's changing, and we did, this board did deny a B2 use based on the application, I think we're making the right decision. I don't even know what vehicle we would downzone it and then re-advertize as an R1 going to LB2.
No, it's an automatic, goes back to the R1. It's not, it just takes its old zoning.
Now, in two thousand and eight, that's when, when they, from R1 to B2, correct?
Correct.
So, it went to B2 in two thousand and eight, and it's been B2 ever since.
Only for?
But, but, but it would still have the right to build a bank on it today.
And we're just, and we're just, we're going from B2.
So, it wouldn't go back to R1 just because the bank wasn't built to that time. The bank still could be built.
It's a B2 with conditions.
But they said that the, the general public came down and accepted a change in their environment, in their location, that would affect their quality of life. That was what was advertised.
To go to a B2.
And the idea that they got a B2, they did not get the B2. It was very specific to a use, and if we don't start, we will continue a problem into the future for this staff, because they shouldn't have even bought the car wash up to us at the time, even though they said it wasn't a rezoning. It was, because the use, and that was the whole idea, it was advertised with only one type of use, and we saw the advertisement, we, the staff did the research.
So, we're going from a B2.
It was a same here for Roadhouse Grill. When, when it was advertised, it said retail stores, it never said a big store with a full-service bar.
So, we're going from a B2 that was approved for a bank to an LB2.
For medical office. Materially, materially, the same effect as a, as a bank and a drugstore.
The PUD has changed, everything about it has changed.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, 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 Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Rossler, I think we've all heard Ms. Rich's concerns very loud and clear. Is it applicable in this particular matter, in your opinion, in your legal opinion to us? Is her concerns applicable, being applied in this particular case?
Advertising.
Yes, sir?
No.
Thank you. Okay. All I had, only question.
Mr. Chairman, Chairman, I, I, I need Ms. Rossler to come back up. Okay, so, we don't have a notice issue, that's what you just said. So, we just heard that they didn't get a B2? I thought this was B2.
It is B2.
Okay. Understood.
So, they, they have a B2 with conditions?
If, if, if you'd allowed a car wash on his property back in last year, you'd had an issue, but when the PUD for a car wash was denied, you lived up to the principles of that Roadhouse Grill Supreme Court decision. The property has been B2 since two thousand and eight, and you agreed with me?
For a bank.
An hour ago that somebody tomorrow could put a bank?
Yes.
On that property, or a drugstore?
Only a bank.
Thus evidencing that it's still B2.
No, for those particular uses.
Correct.
We've completely changed the use today, even though it's an LB2, which is great, but it's not a bank, and it, and it's not, it's not the, the, what was it, banking on drugs?
But I, I think that's the point of the rezoning.
And if you go back and read the ruling, the Supreme Court said, you start over, because people left with only one specific use, and zoning was only based on that particular use, and so, you go back to the R1 when the wheels come off of those two things.
The wheels didn't come off, but I, I agree with you that if you allowed a car wash, there'd been an issue. That was the whole basis for what we talked about last year. But this is the starting over. This is the public notice, this is the public hearing, this is the rezoning. How many times has, has the commission put a condition on property, and then, I, I got many of them, years later, somebody comes back and asks for a complete rezoning to take that condition off? That's exactly what's happening here.
I'd like to make a motion that we moved to approve the application based on staff recommendations, going from a B2 business district down to a LB2 limited neighborhood business district.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
I oppose it based on advertising information.
Item number seven, twenty-nine fifty-five, Dalton Street, it's recommended, it's a group application, we'll take it in three separate parts. First part is subdivision, which is recommended for tentative approval. It's their motion.
So, move.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes. Item seven B, the PUD, which is recommend, tentative approval. It's their motion.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations, findings of facts A through E.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes. Part C, zoning recommended for tentative approval. It's their motion.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations, going from a B2 neighborhood district to a LB2 limited neighborhood business district.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
Oppose.
Moving to item number eight, seven fifty-eight, Downtowner Boulevard and Forty-three twelve, Mid-Most Drive, subdivision and zoning, we'll take them separate. Item number one, subdivision, recommended for tentative approval. It's their motion.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item eight A passes. Eight B zoning, recommended for tentative approval. It's their motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes. I passes. Item number nine, eighteen ten, eighteen twelve, and eighteen fourteen, Old Shell Road, one seventeen Mobile and Vermory Boulevard. Ms. Latham is recused. It's in three parts, subdivision, PUD, and planning approval. We'll take them separately. First part, subdivision application, recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item passes. Part B, PUD, recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
Real quick, is the PUD is one we wanted to take out lots two and three? Or is that just in the...
It's only for lots one and two. You're removing lot three.
Take out lot three. Okay. I'll move to approve the PUD, removing lot three, reading findings of effect, A through F.
Just a moment. I wanted to make sure, did the commission...
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Approving the request for the...
Reduced setback.
Reduced setback of the building, the parking, and the reduced tree requirements on the front edge.
Secondly, Mr. Chairman.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item nine B passes. Item C, planning approval, recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
I'll make, make the motion for planning approval for lots three, stating approval of findings of fact, A and B.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item passes. Is there any other business? I'd like to wish you all a happy holiday. See you later. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Carlice.
Have a Merry Christmas, Shirley.
Same to you. You have a good one.